Good evening. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Winchton Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, July 25th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone in the audience this evening who is audio or video recording? If you would just indicate, please. And seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to Selectmen's comments. Mr. Ward.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. I do have one. I'd like to announce the Senior Tax Work Off Program for FY '23. It will be funded again this year per the vote at the annual town meeting. A qualified participant can earn up to $1,100 off of your tax bill. And we have eight openings. Last year, we had five participants. Not our usual number. It was down, possibly due to COVID. So if you are interested in more information or applying for that, contact the Town Manager's office. Is there anything online that they should do, or just call in?
We typically prefer they call.
They can call in or come in to get an application.
Very good. So please reach out.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
What is a cable station operator?
It's the person that used to do that job. Remember Rayco? He was working under the Senior Work Off Program as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Public comments and announcements, anything this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we have no public hearings. We do have multiple appointments and resignations. First up, we have a resignation letter from Lionel Cludier. Regrets he must resign from the Community Preservation Act Exploratory Committee. Questions, comments from the board? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
I do have a question. Are they remote only, or are they both a hybrid? Like in-person and remote?
So it's been a little bit of a mix. But more often than not, the online component on Zoom has been a little bit of a turnoff for Mr. Cludier in particular. But they have been mixed.
Okay. So he couldn't participate by coming, and some people participate remotely?
So I believe there's been two instances where they did a hybrid. One of them, they had to cancel due to low participation. I think they're finding it difficult to have hybrid meetings. So the preference has been having them remote. There is one member of the committee that can exclusively do a remote. Otherwise, they would do it in person. So it just hasn't really been working too well for that particular individual.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move the Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Lionel Cludier from the Community Preservation Act Exploratory Committee, and we thank him for his service.
Second.
Thank you, made and seconded to approve the resignation. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And thank you very much, Lionel, for what you do for the community. 4.2, we have a Board of Registars resignation from Lynn Murray. In your packet is a letter from her stating that she is also a member of the Council on Aging. It is in Massachusetts state law, does not permit both of those being held by the same person at the same time. So with regret, she has to resign from the registrar.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move to accept the resignation of Lynn Murray from the Board of Registars, and we thank her for her service.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Again, thank you very much, Lynn, for what you do. And luckily, we have next up an appointment to the Board of Registars, Gail Smith. A letter of interest is in your packet. Sorry, I have a dry throat. Questions, comments? I'll take a minute to motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move to appoint Gail Smith to the Board of Registars with her term to expire March 30th, 2025.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Election Workers Annual Appointments. Mass. General Law, Chapter 54, Section 12 requires that the Board of Selectmen annually appoint town election workers between July 15th and August 15th. So in our packet is a list of election workers recommended by our town clerk, Wendy Stevens.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I need to recuse myself from any discussion or vote on this item since the warden is my wife, and she's on the list.
Thank you.
That being said, then we don't have a quorum.
We won't have a quorum on this particular item.
You have a majority of those present.
That's true, okay.
In addition, I've heard from Selectwoman Salter, and she said she'll be on her way, so if you'd like to postpone till later.
I will move that we postpone 4.4 until the arrival of Selectwoman Salter.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. 4.5, Assignment of Police Officer to Polling Place. Again, town clerk Wendy Stevens has supplied an email explaining this new process with us to assign the number of policemen, police officers, to polling places. And her letter is in your packet. This is a new requirement that was part of the Votes Act that was signed into law just this past June. Previously, it was responsible of the Chief of Police, and it is now the Board of Selectmen. Questions, comments?
I just, overall, and it's really not on anything in particular. I think what I'm questioning is because so many people maybe aren't comfortable with elections, and I mean in general, not specifically Winchton, because I think everybody here does a wonderful job. Is there some way that, like for instance, going back to the Board of Registars, if somebody was interested, how do we let the public know that there's a vacancy or a position available where they could apply? Or for an election worker? Or, you know, anything that has to do with it? Just something so that the public is well aware of how they can become involved themselves and participate in the process.
Sure, and that's a great question, and something we've been grappling with a little bit in my office. So historically, it's been past practice that if there's a vacancy and someone steps up, they're appointed. I would like to implement a step in between those two points that would publicly post any roles to our social media and to our website. I think the concern previously is that it would offend people that have stepped up. I think more often than not, I guess, A, unfortunately, even if we post it, we're not going to hear from a lot of people anyway, because it's difficult to get people to participate. But I think the second piece is the town would be for the better because having at least some limited competition in some of these roles, or at least making people aware of turnover in the position, I think makes for a more transparent experience in terms of people interacting with their local government. And so moving forward, we would like to regularly post these for, you know, 10 days on the town website and social media.
And to piggyback on that, Town Manager and I met with Brian Riley and Lauren, I'm drawing a blank, from KP Law a few weeks ago to talk about a couple of various subjects. And one of the things we talked about doing was starting a fairly regular, if you will, series of meetings, or not classes, per se, but they were-
Seminars.
Thank you, seminars, yeah. On various topics that people should know about. And one of them was the election. Especially, we've got the midterms coming up this November and such like that. So I think tied into that, we talked about maybe doing that, maybe September, something like that. Hold a public forum and stuff, and we can actually talk about on the local level what's involved and stuff like that. So I think that would be a good time to touch on some of that, too. Mrs. Ward, Dr. Ward, excuse me.
Just something to remember, we have lost one of our precincts. So we only have three precincts now instead of four, which means that there are 16 less workers that we need. So we do have a list. Right now, we have an abundance. Some are working in September, some are working in November because I just don't have enough slots for all of them to work, so they're trading off. And they have been trained multiple times. It's not something you can just walk into and do. There is protocols that they have to follow. And more and more, we're seeing that the state is kind of pushing us to go electronic. So I think the poll pads were approved by Robinson-Brothers. We don't have them yet. When we do, that'll be more training. So some of the folks that are currently on our list may drop off because they're not tech savvy. So we may need to advertise that with that as a criteria. You have to be comfortable with technology.
Thank you. Anything further on 4.5? And as noted, we do not have to specify a not particular officer, but just the number of officers.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move the Board of Selectmen assign one police officer to the polling place for each election during FY 2023, as now required by the election reform law.
Second.
Can I have another discussion?
Yes.
Not that I want to beat this dead horse, but what if we need more than one? You know, does this give the chief flexibility to assign more than one if we only say one? What if it's a particularly raucous election? We've had them.
So would you, a motion of up to two, or something like that?
I don't know. What do you think? I think one-
Mrs. Ward, Dr. Ward.
Can I amend it to say a police officer will be at the polling places during opening poll times?
At least one?
Well, yeah, one. So that would give a, they could have three if that was a shift.
So if I move that the Board of Selectmen assign at least one?
Okay.
Can I amend it to say at least one police officer to the polling place for each election during FY 2023 is now required?
Second.
You're okay with the amendments, with the change? Okay, thank you. So the motion before us is as amended to add the words "at least" between "assign" and "one." Any questions, comments? If none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Mrs. Salter, we're going to jump back to 4.4, the annual appointments. As Mr. Ward's wife is on the list, he recuses himself from this vote.
Oh, okay, sure.
So this was on the appointment of the town election workers. And as Dr. Ward just touched on base, that list may change, but that's what we have at the moment. So please note for the record, confirm that Rick has recused himself from this discussion. Anything else from the board? I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint the list of election workers presented this evening and recommended by town clerk Wendy Stevens and the election warden, Dr. Warren, Maureen Ward. Sorry.
Seconded.
Thank you, made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Moving on. 4.6, we just have our usual list of vacancies. Communications Committee, one vacancy. The Community Preservation Act Exploratory Committee, we have one vacancy. Conservation Commission, one vacancy. Cultural Council, we have 13 vacancies. Then we need a fence viewer field driver, we have one vacancy. The Open Space Preservation Appraisal and/or Survey Revolving Fund Advisory Committee. The Zoning Board of Appeals, we have two alternate member positions open. If you have any questions or would like more information about any of these, please reach out to the Town Manager's office. Thank you. We have before us this evening a 5.1 entertainment permit for a townwide scavenger hunt. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just for the record, state your name.
Tiffany Newton.
Thank you. So what do you have planned for August 20th?
So last year, we started the townwide scavenger hunt. It went over fairly well. This year will be a little bit similar. A few things will be changed. Last year, we started at the Historical Society. This year, we're going to start in Gar Park. There'll be 15 stops, which is what we had last year. There'll be a prize for the winner. We typically pick the locations out. It's going to be a now and then theme, so it's still-
I'm sorry, what theme?
A now and then theme.
Now and then, okay.
So we'll pick places that are here now that used to be something else. And based on what they used to be, they have to figure out where they are now.
Oh, wow.
So then they have to go there. And we have little boxes we set up last year with a stamp, and so no one has to man the locations. Last year, we gave out ice cream, but we're not planning to do that this year. I think that's all I have. Does anyone have any other questions?
Any rain date, or is it rain or shine on the 20th?
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine. Way of galoshes. No issues from department heads? And this is scheduled to start at 1 o'clock. Any questions or comments?
I do.
Mrs. Anderson.
When you say townwide scavenger hunt, could you do it on foot, walking?
I haven't, we haven't picked up all the locations yet. Based on what I'm thinking, this year it might be last year. We tried to do mostly walking, but people did find it to be spread out and felt maybe it couldn't be done on foot. That was one of the critiques that we got. But our theme was very historical, so some of it was in Old Center, some of it was downtown. So this year, it probably would be more located downtown, so it might be more, you know, walking. I don't know the right word right now in my brain. It's Monday. It might be easier to walk this year than it was last year, but I can't guarantee that, I guess. Oh, go ahead.
I think I'm just wondering if we have to, like, plan for increased traffic flow or pedestrian flow?
Okay.
Bike flow.
Last year, like I said, we had some families that did it by foot, some families that drove. It didn't seem to be a big issue. We probably had maybe like 20 to 25 people participating. Typically, that's what I was going to say, that I did forget to mention, it's teams of up to five. Last year, there was a $15 fee to participate. But it seemed to go over K. We didn't have, we had very positive feedback. People had a good time. And at that time, again, it was a smaller group, so we didn't have to worry about any of that. I don't necessarily anticipate that being an issue this year. But if it was to become an issue, you know, after this year or something, it's something we would address.
I just might recommend, you know, speaking to the chief about it.
Sure.
I'm sure you, just to put them on notice.
Absolutely.
Anything further?
No. Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the entertainment permit for the Recreation Commission for the scavenger hunt for Saturday, August 20th, 2022, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you, made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. And another one from Ms. Newton. Summer Concert Series extension. Ms. Newton.
Hi. So we had our Battle of the Bands winner, the Faceless Hobos. They ended up having a date conflict with the date that was open for them. And they asked if we could move it to August 5th instead. So we were amenable to that. We were able to find a fill-in for this past Friday. And we're just here seeking that we can extend it by one more week so they can play their winning spot.
Very good, thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Seeing and hearing none, and I'm going to motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the extension of the Winchton Recreation Commission's Summer Concert Series at the park through Friday, August 5th, 2022, as presented this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We do have a department head report this evening. Mr. Brian Croto, our DPW director, is here this evening. Mr. Croto, how are you?
I'm here.
Some days, that's all you can ask for.
That's right. So just a brief overview on the projects. I'm not going to give you the typical speech for the DPW, because I think we've done it the last few years. Right now, Central Street is going pretty well. They're wrapping up the drainage this week. They started the underground electrical conduit. You'll see a lighting tower in front of the police station, which is going to provide lights downtown until we get the new lights, the pole lamps up. The existing wires were not in any conduit, and they were kind of scattered to how they were buried, so we don't want any of their workers getting hurt while installing the new stuff. So we took it offline today. So you will see that lighting tower in use. Other than that, the water in sewer came in a little bit under budget. We're still figuring out the numbers, but we are below the projected value. Drainage is going as expected, and we're hoping to see pavement the second or third week in August. We'll see the binder go down, which will get rid of the mess that's out there now. Then they'll continue to work off the binder, resetting curb, installing sidewalks, so on and so forth. But it will eliminate the dust that's there now. Other than that, that project's going very well. It's ahead of schedule. Depending on how it hits and how much sidewalks laden curbing, depends whether or not we put the top coat on this year. We won't let them do any more sidewalks past the end of September due to this area in early winters. If salt gets on the concrete that's new, it pops the top off, and then we don't have good-looking sidewalks. And I don't, I think we all spent too much money on this to half-assed on that. So we want to make sure that it's correct and it looks good. Other than that, the Complete Streets Project, which is the top of Central, up to Ingleside, that went out to bid today. That's a two-week turnaround on that. That'll be a good cap or project to close out the top of Central Street, to get that moving. We anticipate that being completed before winter is our goal. Blair Square outside here, that's moving along. We have a meeting this week with representatives from the state to keep moving that forward. There is going to be some design money that's needed for it, but the project's underway. Mass. Thot's accepted it, so it'll be almost the same as what Central Street was. So they'll fund the project. That one, they'll fund 100% because there's no water or sewer on it. It's straight, just safety upgrades and redesign. The Robbins Road Bridge was completed. That's all done now, so that's open to the public. It's been signed off by our engineer and the state's engineer. They had a couple little punch items that were taken care of. They weren't too concerned about it. So that's in good shape. You guys were notified, I believe, a couple weeks ago that we received the grant for what, up the lake? Mill, the Mill Circle Bridge? So that's going into design. I've had, the state was gracious enough, I talked to them on Friday, to assign us the same engineering firm that we used for Robbins Road. We did very well with them. They did a really good job. They kept it within budget, and even a little bit under budget. So that was a huge win. So I'm looking forward to working with them on that and get that underway. After that's designed, the next step is to apply for the $500,000, like we did on the last one, and then go from there. So getting the design done is going to be huge in that respect. On this afternoon, we opened up bids for the water plant that will be coming to a future meeting. We're still kind of sorting through the information and gathering everything, and we'll have something for you guys later on on that. Other than that, the sewer plant's going to be going out to bid the first week of August, and we'll get the results in about 30 days from that, and then have to analyze it. Going back to the water bid, it went out publicly on con buys. We only had one firm bid it. We had three firms look at it. And the response I got back from the other two firms was that it wasn't advantageous for them to bid it because there was no profit in it, because it's being run efficiently at this time. So I was kind of taken back by that. I know. But that's a good sign. We just got to figure it out from here. I was kind of shocked because the other two firms were the same size as what's there now. A couple smaller firms reached out, but they never came to the walkthrough. So can't do anything about that.
And if I could just add something back quickly. So we're meeting with the Joint Water Authority this week, and I would anticipate that Ashburnham would look to move forward with the contract. I think in terms of the dynamics of this board, it's probably a little more nuanced of a decision. So I think we'd like to get the feedback from the Joint Water Authority and bring it back to this board in Winchton to provide all of you an opportunity to kind of drill down on some of the numbers and take a closer look at it. And then at that time, if you're comfortable moving in that direction, you can, you know, vote to authorize me to sign off on behalf or something along those lines. But it's certainly not something we have to rush into immediately.
Now that, with the quote we were just talking about, we've got one quote. That's for the water side.
Correct, the drinking water side.
Not the wastewater treatment plant.
Wastewater is going out August 1st.
That one is just going out August 1st. Okay, just want to clarify. Okay.
Other than that, on the DPW side, we've been accepting and purchasing the equipment that was approved at town meeting, which the guys are very grateful for. That equipment has already made a difference in how we're doing some of the operations in prepping for road paving. Any questions on DPW, water, or sewer?
I just had one question. You talked about the lighting tower in front of the police station, because we have to take everything else offline for now. So will that be the only street light on all of Central Street?
No. When you go above the police station, so when you go Grove Street up, there's still pole mounted lights. I'm talking about the aluminum lights that are from the police station to the corner of Cumberland's. So the lights at Cumberland's are still on, which reflect out, so it's darker towards, it's darker between, let's say, Cristo's and the police station.
Right, okay.
So it's focusing in both directions, and it's going to be brighter than it was with the current streetlights under there.
Okay.
The upper section is still normal. Those are off the poles. There's no-
Regular lighting, okay.
There's nothing with those.
All right, great, thank you.
Weren't we looking into getting fancy lighting for Central Street?
What was the question?
Weren't we looking into getting fancy lighting, like decorative?
We are. Decisive style, yeah.
Yep, they're in stock in the trailer waiting to go in.
All right, thank you. And I think it's, you know, it's those little attention to details. You can argue, you know, it maybe costs us a little more, but I think the overall effect of a lot of those little things make a big difference in how the town looks and how people perceive the town. make a big difference in how the town looks and how people perceive the town. That's good to hear. Okay. Anything else from the board?
I have a question.
Yes.
Somebody asked me and I couldn't answer them. Why, could you explain why, when the construction started on Central Street and you tore it up for the water and ran new water lines, and then you went back and redid it for drainage? And they're like, why didn't you do it all at the same time?
So, as part of construction, you always start with your deepest utility. So, your deepest utility in Winchunin was...
I'm sorry, the what utility?
Your deepest.
Deepest.
So, your deepest utility here is sewer. So, they started at the bottom, worked their way up, and then they went to water, which is your second, and then they went to drainage. So, what you have, you can't do them all at the same time because of conflicts with the trenches. We would have had a trench that was eight to 10 feet wide open at one time, which isn't feasible because you run into conflict. So, if you run into conflict on this, it's going to stop at all. So, you do one utility at a time. It's just the way that it's done up here. That's the way construction works. Start from the bottom, go up.
Now, are they on top of each other?
They are.
So, you really do...
Well, they're not stacked.
Not stacked, but...
They're offset.
But they're also, but they all kind of live off the same base.
Right. So, to give you...
You have to do one before you can have the base to do the next one?
Correct.
Something like that.
There was a lot of ledge out there. In front of the RHI building, the ledge was six inches, eight inches below pavement, and they had to go down six and eight feet. So, it was to put drainage, to put sewer incorrectly, to get the water deeper, because we put a bigger line. So, if we put that line on top of the existing ledge, it brings it up, which potential for freezing. At the end of the day, if it freezes, we're in a lot of trouble. So, you want a minimum depth of four and a half to five feet on your water. And by us going from a 10-inch to a 12-inch main, we lost two inches right there, which people don't think is a big deal, but in the end it is. And it was, the old stuff was already sitting on top of ledge, and that's why we had the issues that we had is because they had no way to flex.
Because they didn't dig down deep enough the first time?
So, we actually found that when they did put that in, back in the, back when they put it in, they actually blasted for it. There was blasting wire in the ledge when we were hammering at it. So, it's interesting.
Yeah, I guess so. Well, I remember speaking to you some weeks ago, months, some months ago now, up by Bell Tates. You were uncovering parts of the old signaling system from when the trains went through there.
Yeah.
Anything else for Mr. Crowdo?
If I could just add something about the paving plan, I think we've been discussing a little bit, materials potentially running higher.
I was going on the paving next. That was just the department update.
Wanted to make sure it didn't get missed.
Did you have a question on that?
Yeah, just on Railroad Street. Are we readjusting that?
It's all done.
It looks like, is it?
We did, we did make an adjustment last week. We widened it by two feet. Vast difference. It was final coated on Thursday, and they tried striping today, but the rain came, so they'll be back tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw, I went by yesterday, so I hope the town dug that up and not a disgruntled...
A mob.
You know what?
Citizen.
That's going to be a nightmare down there because I, you know, I tried it out, and what's happening is people back out and they don't look. And especially the people who are, you know, they're coming out of the pub.
Yep.
And they're vehicles, and yeah, I was almost hit by someone who never even looked. He just backed right out. I think that's going to happen.
I don't disagree. I just put it in according to the design.
Yeah. I see that happening quite a bit. They're running into the store there and running out and not paying attention.
Which store were you running into? The liquor store?
Just saying.
One of these days, they'll do it right in front of a food shop.
I was driving by both.
Exposing her like that.
And I know that Karen Brooks had mentioned to me that one of their tow truck drivers tried to make that. I don't know why he would try to make that corner, but...
I received that phone call as well.
Couldn't make that. Yeah, I told her to call.
Well, we appreciate the flexibility of the DPW on addressing some concerns with that corner.
I got to give credit to the town manager.
And the town manager.
I don't think Andy's drivers will be going down that road again.
I don't think so.
What else you got for us, Brian?
The pavement plan update is, I don't even know where I am up there, whatever number it is. So, as you all know, the costs are rising. State of Massachusetts sets the rates for pavement, oil, and diesel fuel. Well, it's gone up a lot since we first discussed this this winter. We did receive a little bit of extra money from the state this year. When we received the money, there was no talk of any cost increases, so we decided to do High Street from the bridge all the way to Old Center. That cost us some serious repairs and plows last year because of manholes, so on and so forth. So, it made sense to get that so that we're not repairing plows anymore, getting it up to a better standard because it's just, it's falling apart rapidly. So, we put that on. In the meantime, we went out, we did already do a little bit of paving. We did Ash Street, or not Ash Street, Teal Road from Cross to 140, and then on the other side of Teal Road, the leveler was put on that. The leveler, or the base was also put on Mellon Road and Russell Farm Road, so those roads are completely regrinded or ground up, graded off, calciumed, and base was put down, so those roads are strong. Those roads are built the way they should be built, not just with an overlay. But in the end, we have some roads coming up. They're starting to mill Maple Street on Wednesday. They're going to bring it, they're going to bring the height of Maple Street down. Then they're going to come in, they're going to put a leveler on, then the Complete Street Project is going to do all their work. Then late fall, we'll come in and we'll top it and do it right. So, that's going to allow the curbing and everything to be done correctly so it's locked in, so we don't have issues of it breaking later on. They're going to mill Jackson, which is a mess, from Central Street to the corner. That's getting milled and leveled. Jackson. They're going to finish topping Teal Road from Cross Street to 140. I don't have enough money to do the 140 side of Teal to Bemis Road, so that's going to, that's going to remain a leveler coat for this year. It's in a lot better shape than it was. We had some divots that were two feet deep in some areas. Those are all addressed. It's a less traveled road. The Ash Street side sees, is a major cut through for Old Center in that way, so that road will be done. Mellon Road's going to be completed because the dollar figure to complete it wasn't, wasn't high. It was, it was $41,000 to do the final coat, so we're going to just complete Mellon and be done with it. Russell Farm are going to leave as is for now. My original plan was to leave that for five years or so, let it move around, let it do what it's going to do, and then we'll go in and top it after that's done. We had Pleasant Summer in Grove, so this street, and then connecting on to Central. We pulled that off. It doesn't, or we believe that Central Street's not going to be completed this year. So, I don't want to have that lip throughout the winter with new asphalt, so we're going to push that off to next paving season. And secondly, I don't have the money to do that one. So, we feel that if we don't get into it, you'll see us come in and do some temporary repairs to get through the winter, so on and so forth, which will get us through. But we just don't, it's 134, 500 to do that road, and I don't have that. Jackson Ave will be done in full. Just to give you an idea, if we were to finish the paving for what we couldn't afford and what we couldn't do, we're looking at $222,000. That's because the price of our current contracts for 69.50 a ton installed. And when I paved last month, we were paying $93 in place because of the surcharges for oil and diesel fuel. And again, that comes directly from the state. So, I wish I had better news because I would have done a lot more if we could have.
Yeah. That's almost a 30%, increase, a third. Wow.
I've talked to other municipalities. Gardner and Templeton went out to bid this year for a new contract for three years, and those bids are coming in at 87 to $90 a ton installed. So, even when we go back out to bid next year, because we're on our third year, I don't anticipate it changing very much. The only thing is, is the oil and diesel fuel pricing, if it reduces, then you can get a credit back off of what you're locked in at. So, it is a good thing. I guess it did this in the 90s when this was put into place. They really haven't seen it till now, what's going on. So, I wanted to give you guys a brief overview. We're going to be making a mess again this week and disrupting traffic more than we do already. So, we wanted to put it out there because we're trying to do our best to get the roads doing, but we just have a lot of work going on.
Thank you. Questions, comments from Mr. Crowdo? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have 7.1, Application for Abatement of Water and Sewer Charges from the Clark YMCA. We have Mr. Quinn here this evening. In your packet, you'll find that there was a water leak, that the water went under the main building and did not enter the sewer system.
Yes, that's correct. We had a broken pipe to a water bubbler.
Oh, a water bubbler, okay. You have the paperwork in front of you. Questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I think, you know, obviously, the water did not go into the sewer, and so the abatement will be for the sewer portion of the bill only because the water was used. But sometimes people see this, and the perception is that they're paying for the Clark's water, if I might. And so, I want to be very, very clear that they're not. This never went into our sewer system. It was overcharged. Our budget, what does this do to our budget? Like, since we build it, obviously, we weren't anticipating that yet, were we? Like, to add into our budget, we weren't anticipating, like, when you send out all your water bills and your sewer bills, and then you figure it out, and then you budget, make your budget accordingly. Correct?
Correct, yeah, but it's based off projections, so we wouldn't have projected that they accidentally used this amount of water, so we wouldn't be relying on that.
So, this is not in our projection, so it wouldn't have affected our budget at all. I just want to be really, really clear that when we're talking about this, this is money that, you know, it, for lack of a better word, accidentally billed. It wasn't, you know, it just never went into the sewer, so nobody's paying for it. The town isn't paying for it. Correct?
That's correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Crowdo, but are there scenarios where, like, somebody's filling a pool or something like that, they can get a separate meter that only bills them for water but not sewer in some communities?
So, if somebody, let's just say yourself, is going to fill a pool, you're on town sewer, you're going to come to me and you're going to fill out a sewer abatement form. That's removing this, you come to me, you give me your swimming pool size, your hot tub size, whatever you're filling, and we do an abatement so that you're not charged the sewer on it. In this case, we, if this went an entire year, then we would have put it into our budget calculation. But because this was picked up within the same billing cycle, it's not part of it because we look at it as a year and a whole, if that makes sense.
Right. I just want to make it very clear that, and so that the people at home understand that, that it was never in the budget. We never...
It didn't cost us anything.
Didn't cost us anything, no.
Not a penny.
And the Clark is in fact paying for the water, but this abatement is because it did not, this portion did not go through the sewer.
Right.
Yeah. Questions, comments from the board? Somebody's eyes must have popped out of their head when they saw that bill.
Yes. We didn't have it budgeted either, so...
Stop it, really?
But, you know, in speaking with Brian, his crew was able to come down and with their computer and plug right in and pinpoint to exactly what and when it started and when it was shut off. But yeah, it was, it was an eye-opening bill.
Yeah, it's scary when that happens. It is.
And we do have the plumber, the verification from the plumbers that it was repaired. Perfect.
Yeah. Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move the Board of Selectmen acting as the Water and Sewer Commissioners, approve a sewer abatement in the amount of $13,623.41, as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seen and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
While I have the opportunity, Mr. Crowdo and his crew doing the work on Central Street, I've been watching from my office window. I've had a front row seat to it, and as you know, it's been extremely, extremely hot. So, I commend them for not only the work that they're doing, but if they're able to be on, ahead of schedule, given all of the setbacks and working conditions, kudos to them.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Thank you.
Next up, we have 7.2, Discussion, Town of Winchunin and Gamma Grant Agreement, Ray, Opioid Settlement Funds. Mr. Salzbach.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as the board is aware, the national opioid settlement case has been ongoing for several years at this point. It has come to a close. So, it is anticipated that about $210 million is going to be distributed across the Commonwealth. That is determined by a formula that was set by the Attorney General's Office. So, of that estimate that they provided, they are loosely estimating that Winchunin is going to receive $384,000 over the next 17 years. So, as I had alluded to in previous meetings, you know, it's not a small chunk of money, but when you break it out over 17 years, the impact that you can actually have with that amount of money, it doesn't go very far. So, the recommendation provided by the AG's office, and it's included in your packet under Municipal Use of Abatement Funds, lists some guidelines and recommendations on how to use those funds in an impactful way. And one of the items they highlight is trying to take those resources, pool them with other nearby communities into a more regional effort that will have a more lasting and significant impact in terms of fighting the opioid crisis. So, separately, I've been having conversations with Representative Zlatnik's office to feel out if there are any of those regionalized opportunities out there. There is one coming out of the city of Gardner. They have committed to take the whole, their whole allotment over the next three or five years and sign it over to, is it Gamma or Gamma? But it's a, an organization that provides Regional Substance Abuse Disorder Services. And I wanted to bring, I guess, this topic before the board in a more broad sense to talk about other opportunities you may be interested in, but I also wanted to make you aware of this regionalized effort as well, if it's something you'd like to explore. So, it's not something you have to make a determination on this evening. If you'd like to give it some thought, then we certainly welcome that. But it would be good if we intend to go the regionalized route, that we have, you know, some type of commitment to that group sometime in the next month or so.
What do they do for us?
What's that?
What have they done for us?
What have they done? I think it's what they will do, is the intent.
No, what have they done?
So, on that note, the Executive Director from the organization and Representative Zlatnik have volunteered to come in at your next meeting if you're interested in kind of kicking the tires on that, and I think that might be a good time to ask those questions.
I have a lot of tires to kick first, yeah.
Kick away.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Justin, you mentioned Gardner getting their money in three to five years. Do we have an option of requesting a faster payout? Why do we have to wait 17? Just curious.
Oh, so Gardner is in the agreement committing that when those funds roll in, that they will hand it directly off to the organization, but they're not getting five years upfront?
I see what you're saying. So, they'll be getting their money from the settlement the same as we will, but the commitment to Gamma is for the three to five years.
Correct. So, every year when that check comes in, they're going to turn around and send it right out.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, if you get that on the agenda when ready, that would be fantastic. Any questions at the moment on this one?
No, I'd like to speak more about it later.
Yep. It'd be also interesting to see if Representatives Zlatnik can come up with some other options for us. for us, to explore, I mean, granted, it isn't much, and I know that they give an outline of the types of things to use it for, so, yep, future discussion. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
All right, we have no old business. Next up is the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Saltzback, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few items to cover. On the financial side of things, I have been working with my team to respond to suggestions made in the Management Letter Report that you received from the auditor. Among them, just the low-hanging fruit, things like going through our files and making sure we have all the documentation that we should have for every employee, things like that, that we can do quick and have a quick turnaround, I'd like to do that and get it off our plate. Some of them, like, like land of low-value parcels that we own and things like that are a little more long-term, have to go through land courts and things like that, could take several years, so we're gonna have the ball rolling on those, but we don't anticipate it to be done quite as fast. And I have officially requested from the federal government the second tranche of the ARPA funding that's gonna roll through sometime in August, so that'll be the last and final payment from them.
And how much will that payment be? Do you know?
I don't have the exact amount offhand, but we have, or will have, about nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, give or take, available in those coffers, and then separately, the hundred-thousand dollar that I sought out with Representatives Lotnick's office about a year ago for downtown improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. On the personnel side of things, I've secured services from a firm to carry out a DISC assessment for Town Hall employees, so basically, it is a way to measure an individual's skillset, get an idea for their strengths and weaknesses, and then as an organization, allows us to compare that data and to see how we can more efficiently and effectively work to serve this community. So that's something that'll be ongoing over the next several months or so, and whatever report or findings that we have that come from that, we'll certainly share with the board, I think it'll provide some, some good insight, anyway, in terms of the existing professional assets that we have in Town Hall. And the deadline for the part-time Recreation Coordinator position was this afternoon at five, and we'll be reviewing any candidates throughout the week.
Did you have one?
We had one. And if anybody would like to, on the board, would like to participate in an interview or anything, I'll be scheduling that next week, so just reach out, find me. Additionally, we had a treasurer lined up, and we could not come to terms, so we're back to square one on that one. We put it back out through MMA, and it may involve another review of what we're offering for a salary, which also impacts, you know, positions above it, but I'd like to let it go out again for another couple weeks. We're pushing it out through LinkedIn as well, and a couple other areas. Indeed, it's gonna go out tomorrow, just to try to maybe reach pockets where we haven't reached before, but I think Tony Rizzelli kinda echoed a sentiment that, that I've been describing, and that there is a extremely limited pool, especially on the financial side, for talent on, in municipalities, anyway, there's a mass retirement over the past decade, and there hasn't nearly been enough people to get into that line of work to make up for it, so. And I guess along a similar vein, and something that we'll probably jump into a little bit more in the next meeting, I intend to put on the agenda, is kicking the tires on potentially having a consultant firm do a review of all of our positions in Town Hall, and trying to do a salary survey and see maybe where we stand with other communities. The treasurer isn't the only role that we've been struggling with, putting out the Planning and Economic Development Director, I think we received three responses in a three-month period. Once again, usually, it's a lower wage as an indicator of limited results, so I'll bring more information on that forward to the board and potential cost estimates for that service, and maybe we can discuss it as a group. On the project side of things, the foundations have been poured for the stage and steps at the Winchonan Community Park, so wander down there and avoid the heavy equipment, but take a look, it's nice to see. I had a meeting today at the Old Murdoch with Russo Bar Associates, the firm that's going to be doing the design for the restoration over there, it was about a hundred degrees up in the bell tower. No exaggeration, but they are very excited to work on this project, and it's nice to see when there's a firm that you can tell they're proud to work on a building, because they're so impressed by it, and that, that is definitely an impressive building, so. The Redevelopment Authority walked through Beach Street last week, and they are debating whether or not to rehab the two family themselves, or to sell the structure as-is, with certain limitations and contingencies. So my concern, for example, is that if the second we sell it, we lose control on the quality of what that building ends up looking like, and we lose control over the timeline. So I don't want them to sell to somebody who's gonna come in and do it cheap, and it's gonna sit like that for fifty years, or come in and then sit on it for five years, just rotting into the pond. So those are some things that we're trying to iron out, and still looking to, to move forward and hopefully have it set and done within a year, so that'll be a quick turnaround. I walked to the property at Four Summer Drive with Nicole Roberts of our Planning and Economic Development Office, and Jim Hunt will both spit last week, and the building is fully gutted on the inside, so I know that one's been moving a little slow. I think when I first got to town in May of twenty-one, people were talking about it being open that summer, which is a little ambitious, but, and I have to say, I'm sure for the general public, you know, you see a lot of rumors on Facebook and everything, and you don't see a lot of outward movement, but I can tell you that over the past year, the inside, it's night and day in terms of what used to be there, and now that things have been remediated, I mean, it is gutted down to the structure, so it's a blank slate. So that is ongoing. On the miscellaneous side of things, I've been corresponding with the Massachusetts Commission on Disability to develop a closed captioning system for our meeting videos, I basically reached out to the state and asked them, you know, hey, we're looking to, to do this in town to engage, you know, for the sake of citizen engagement and providing accessibility, what do other communities do in the Commonwealth? So they've been able to provide some guidance. Separately, Mrs. Daigle has been trying to sort out the larger-scale issues we have for broadcasting, and that's another topic that came up as well, so we're moving forward on that one. On Monday, August first, at eleven, I'll be walking Central Street with members of Heal and Gala in an effort to identify potential spaces for public art downtown, so if anybody would like to participate in that, just get in touch with me, it should be relatively quick, but just trying to find ways that we could kind of spruce up areas that are a little gloomy, with a little bit of public art is always a cost-effective way to reinvigorate downtown. My office has been collaborating with the owners of the IGA building for the past year in an effort to help them secure a tenant, and this one raised a couple eyebrows, so currently, the Family Dollar is over there, directly next to it, they are looking to put in a Dollar Tree, so they're owned by the same parent company, and I know a lot of people are kinda angling for a grocery store down there. The property had several obstacles that kinda made that difficult, beyond just demographics of the community and population size, the physical structure itself, and the current owner, I guess their willingness to, to make the investment to get that property back up to speed. So the good piece of this is that Dollar Tree has committed to making that investment, so it's a whole new roof on, on the structure, not just patches, a whole new roof, as well as some minor facade improvements. So once that's all set, that building is set, and, you know, it's a long view, but in five or ten years, it, it could be a grocery store, it could be really anything, it could still be the Dollar Tree, but at least it's gonna be, you know, open and another resource of the community, and they'll be actively paying taxes, and it won't just be a, you know, big hole in the middle of our downtown, so that's a win. Also, the new Walgreens building is scheduled to break ground within the coming month, so that, that'll be moving forward pretty quickly, too. Any questions?
I just got one, I got one, that's good English. I have one, Justin. The agreement with Comcast, or Communications Committee, maybe, where are we as far as, we're negotiating a new contract, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wanna, I, I've been experiencing difficulties, I have Comcast on my internet, and the service has been lousy the last, just not even taking into account the blips in the, in the electrical power. If they, I don't know what they can do, or what you can put in a contract, maybe upgrade some equipment somewhere, seems like a lot of people have been on social media saying that they keep, their routers keep dropping, and the connections keep dropping, and such like that, so when you do speak with them, if you just, if you haven't already, you know, address quality of service, would be great.
We have a subcommittee that meets and negotiates with Justin.
Okay.
But I'm sure he can bring that up with him.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything further for the town manager? Nope, moving on. We have two sets of minutes, there's one set of Monday, June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. It is, we had previously approved it, there's just, it was amended to, put some information in the correct place, all the information is still there.
All the stuff in red.
I'm sorry?
I, I, I just, I guess I didn't understand why, why it was done that way, like, maybe because it just gave me a headache reading it and trying to figure it out.
Oh, the, the track changes?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I have reached out to, touching on the, the discussion we've had on minutes and the format of the minutes, I'm waiting to hear back from KP Law. The example that I presented to the board a few weeks ago now, I sent to them, and it sounds like in, when we were meeting with Lauren and Brian, the state has recently come out with some more new guidelines, like they have nothing better to do than give us more guidelines on our minutes, so I'm waiting to hear back from them, and I'll, I'll poke Brian a little bit, I didn't give him a date, so that's fine, so we can get, get a better grip on what we need to do for our minutes. So if there's any, no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move to approve the regular session minutes for Monday, June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Amended.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussions? All in favor, in favor say aye.
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 And the chair will vote aye. And then we have one set of executive session minutes for review only. This is our Monday, July eleventh, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I vote to approve only the executive session minutes for Monday, July eleventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, moved in seconded, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Madam Chair, needs to be a roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right, too.
Oh, executive session, yes. Mrs. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Ward.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Right.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Daigle. Communications, agenda items, we do have an executive session this evening.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move to enter into executive session under exemption number eight, to consider our interview applicants for employment by the preliminary screening committee. If the chair declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified applicants, subject being the role of the police chief, and to reconvene into public session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
I do declare. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, roll call vote, Mrs. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Ward.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are in executive session at seven thirty-four.